All right. Hello, my name is John Ison. I'm Executive Director of Rochesteri Builders. Welcome to our first Town Hall webinar, virtual Town Hall on behalf of our membership and that of C Mar. And Eric is here as well. Thank you for attending. We will put this on our YouTube channel later on this week after we're done with all of our Town Halls. So thank you to the candidates for attending. Some of you that ran for political office, it's not an easy thing to do. So I appreciate you putting, raising your hand and saying, yes, I want to participate in something where your reward is getting yelled at. So with that, I'm going to turn my camera off and turn it over to Rick and Eric.
All right. Welcome candidates. Again, we really appreciate you taking the time today to join our virtual Town Hall. And I think we're just going to jump right in with a question that I think affects such a large portion of our community, and that's related to housing. You know, at this point in time, Rochester is facing a very severe housing shortage in all segments of the market. You know, and I'll direct this question first at Vanjie. What do you believe are the best steps the city can take to address the issue? And do you believe they should play an active role in addressing it in a broader sense? And please just explain your answer if you could.
Rick, might we get 90 seconds to just introduce ourselves quickly?
I cut you off. Yes.
I like your enthusiasm.
I do. I get excited to just talk policy. Yeah, please go ahead and introduce yourself and then we'll move on to Brooke.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for having us here today. My name is Vanjie Castro. I'm running for City Council President, Council Member at Large. I've lived here in Rochester for over 10 years, so I do understand some of the the concerns when it comes to housing. So my family immigrated here from the Philippines. I was raised in the Bay Area in California. I received my associate's degree in liberal arts and my B SBA in political science while I was working full time in retail and in customer service in restaurants. So I'm really excited to be running for City Council President. I've worked in this community for at the diversity council for over seven years, working in training for diversity and inclusion, and then comprehensive sex education with Planned Parenthood, and then with rank choice voting with Fair Vote Minnesota. So that's kind of a little bit of my background, and I'm just ready to answer some of the questions that you have. Thank you.
Thank you. Brooke?
Sure. Well, thank you so much for having me. It's really wonderful to be with you today. Through my role, leading the nonprofit consortium, I see the direct impacts of all of your investment of time, energy, and resources in our community. Beyond what you all do to provide the physical structures that house our organizations, I know and all of your, that you and all of your colleagues really provide leadership in ways that have a meaningful impact here. So businesses and people can thrive. So I grew up in Rochester and my family shares this value of committing our resources and expertise to social good. So thank you for your leadership there. I moved my family back to raise my children and to be close to my parents and also to focus my work in a community that I'm deeply passionate about. I've committed my career to leading public-private partnerships that improve our communities. With degrees in urban planning, geography, and public health, I've worked in both the public and the private sector. And seven years ago, I took the leap and created my own small health and human services consulting firm. I feel so fortunate to get to do the work I do and work with the organizations I do. But wow, what a time to be leading a small business. Like so many of you and your employees, my family's experienced job loss and stress of trying to keep our kids healthy and functioning in difficult circumstances. So as a small business owner, a leader in the nonprofit community, a public health professional, a youth hockey coach, and a mother of young sons, I'm living this crisis. But together, we're resilient and together, we will get through this by being bold, creative, and continuing that investment towards social good. Thank you.
Thank you, Brooke. Now, now after.
Did I have my annoying noise? I apologize for that.
Now, after. Yes, little test. Um, so with that, after my first false start, we'll jump into that first question once again. And just to reiterate, you know, with the severe housing shortage that Rochester is facing, what do you believe are the best steps the city can take to address the issue? Do you believe the city should play an active role in addressing the issue of the broader housing shortage? And please explain your answer. And I think, take your time to do so for as complete an answer as possible. And don't worry about John Dinghy on this one because it's so important.
Yeah. Yes, I think that the city has a huge role in playing with making sure that we have affordable housing. I do understand that we have a huge housing shortage, especially when it comes to single-family homes under $200,000. There are, from what I've read, there are no homes that are affordable under $100,000 here in Rochester in stock. And so when we're thinking about helping families who are starting out to build wealth, owning a home is where a lot of those families can start to build wealth. And if we can't help them find ways like providing them loans, or also making sure that we have stock here in Rochester by looking at ordinances that are making it more difficult for builders to be able to create more affordable housing here in Rochester, and also trying to figure out what are plans for the future. I think we have the planning to succeed for the next 20 years and changing some of the zonings that we had that made it very difficult for us to create more mixed use and mixed income housing. And I think when we're creating more infrastructure and providing TIF to builders to kind of look at best avenues to for, for everyone to be able to benefit from building affordable housing. I know that some of the roadblocks to that is the expense when it comes to builders being a provide really affordable housing, anything that's like under 1,200, you know, if we're talking about rentals, under $1,200, there's not a lot of incentive for that. So finding a way to create more incentive to build more affordable housing that's under 100,000 or rentals under 1,200. So that's where I stand on that. So.
Excellent. Thank you, Vanjie. Brooke?
Sure. Okay. Well, I want to start off by saying for this whole discussion that every one of these topics really warrants much more detailed further discussion and follow-up. And I'm not going to pretend that I have the perfect responses. What I can offer you is a willingness to openly listen, learn, and work with all of you to find solutions that benefit our businesses and the people who live here. So I just want to set that frame for the discussion today. So regarding the housing shortage, I echo a lot of what Vanjie said. Obviously, the city does have a current role in housing, and I think we could be more active and creative using some of the strategies that Vanjie mentioned and some of the other programs that are really supporting families and building wealth through that homeownership around the country. We know that our city staff right now are working on a report that's due in September that will possibly address our city role in incentivizing affordable housing. So I'm very anxious to see what that looks like and what those recommendations look like. Other than that, I of course play or of course support the city's role in shrinking housing shortages with the considerations around current business owners and homeowners and what, what impacts there are on those current properties. I do think, I do think subsidizing or incentivizing all types of homes is a tough sell right now as we're, we know that affordable housing is particularly hard to find. But I think we can again, be creative, think about specific types of development, like infill development that are more costly and cumbersome to develop, and that may be where we have some leverage to incentivize. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, both of you, and thank you for taking your time out of your day. Undertaking the task of updating the land development manual or the LDM. Much of that update will happen during your time on the council. If you are elected, what areas of the unified development code would you focus on as part of that process and why?
Do you want me to go first?
Yes, Brooke.
Sure. Okay. So I was a freshman at John Marshall when the land development manual was drafted. I now have kids in elementary school. I'm running for City Council President. Obviously, I think we're past time that we create a less arduous, clunky, outdated, and confusing document. So of course, I support the UDC's goal of modernizing Rochester's development regulations and ordinances and making these ordinances a regulation.
We lost you.
I think having visual, easy to understand.
Yeah.
Hello? Am I not there?
You're coming, you're coming in and out.
Brooke, you're there now.
Might be your broadband.
I'm out at my parents', so that doesn't, out in the country. Am I totally gone?
No, you're just, you're, you're, it's just the, it's the audio.
Yeah, I think we can hear you now. There's just a touch of a video and vocal lag, but I think we lost you about halfway through the answer, and I hate to have to do this to you, but if you want to rewind and try to jump back into where it feels right.
Okay.
So.
Sure. So I just said it was past time that we update this document. Can you hear me? Okay, so I, and I support the unified development codes goal of modernizing our development regulations and ordinances. So they're easy to understand and user-friendly. For somebody who's not a builder, I think that even the visual elements are helpful for us to be able to grasp onto the development standards that the city requires. So I often talk about gaining efficiencies in our existing systems. That's a big part of my campaign and what I do as a professional. So I'd like to see how the UDC can reduce some of the restrictions on the restrictions related to the development process and how it can ensure flexibility with the new zoning codes and how we can see this really shining through this efficiency and flexibility as we see these iterations published in the next year. Thank you. Sorry, that was so choppy.
Oh, no problem. Thank you, Brooke. Vanjie?
Yeah, so I echo what Brooke said, and when it really comes down to it, of course, like I'm not a builder, and I would more so listen to what you all would like us to focus on and and basically just making, making sure that there are no ordinances or regulations that just don't seem to make sense anymore. And figuring out how we can make it more, more accessible and easy for builders to be able to do what they need to do.
Thank you. Thank you. I believe it's my turn now. Next question up that I have for you guys is sticking within the, for you folks, is sticking within the development arena, obviously, but really focusing on the downtown area a little bit. There's been so much focus on the downtown area, especially as it relates to providing city and state-level financing for infrastructure within that core, while simultaneously making it more expensive to build in non-core areas of the city or build into new areas of the city as they are brought in. You know, what, what do you believe the city can do to support development outside the downtown core? If you think it should, if you think it shouldn't, explain why or why not you think that is the case. And Vanjie, I believe it's your turn.
Well, currently, we're doing a lot of infrastructure work downtown, obviously, to support more building, creating more density downtown, because we do want to create more affordable housing for folks that we are attracting to the city to build a larger workforce. And it would be, it makes sense for us to make, to build housing closer to downtown for that workforce. However, eventually, at some point, we're going to need to build a little further out. And yes, I think there should be more incentive to create more mixed-use housing and work at the city work on that. Yeah, I'd really have to think a little bit more on that and do some research to really give you a good definite answer about that. But that's kind of like where, where I kind of fall on that. And the idea of building more density downtown and working with the state about how we can create more incentive for that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Brooke?
Sure. This is a tough one, especially with the sewer plan that we are now thinking about developing by. So I appreciate that this is a tough topic, and we've, we've of course seen the, how DMC has benefited downtown and created a strain on the city outside of downtown. So I think, I think that we need to work together to figure out how we can support neighborhoods and development outside of downtown. I was reflecting on how before COVID, our construction, construction industry was booming, so much so that there was a labor shortage. So as part of one of the projects I was working on, I was having great discussions with organizations working in trades and development in the building sector about how we increase opportunities for women and people of color to have careers in these sectors. So we, we have an infrastructure in place to really grow and diversify and strengthen our building sector. This is a really exciting time, I think, despite the crisis. But again, you'll hear me say a lot, this, this idea of leveraging existing resources. So I think this is especially important right now during the crisis with our limited dollars. And it makes me think of what we've already done related to updating zoning, creating R2X to support bigger, more profitable developments that were not previously allowed. And I think it's time and needed that the city does review our fee structure to incentivize at least smart growth where it makes sense, and also to provide opportunities for residents, including my family and neighbors who do desire to be in more spacious suburban homes with larger lots. So I think both need to be true. And I'm looking forward to learning more about how to do that.
All right. Thank you. And Vanjie, you'll, you'll start us off with this one.
Okay.
In talking to the stakeholders in the short-term rental market, the vacancy rate declined much quicker than that of the hotels in our region. This clearly demonstrates the visiting public desire for this niche product. What are your views on short-term rentals?
Um, I support the idea of short-term rentals, especially for visitors going to Mayo who may have to be here for treatment for a month or two or three, and having the availability for them to have that option, I think, is important, especially for those who may not be able to afford staying in hotels for long periods of time. It could be more affordable for them to stay any short-term rental than it is to stay in a hotel. So I think it's an odd time though, right now, especially with COVID-19 and our our tourism having gone down, it is starting to go a little, you know, people are coming back to Mayo for treatment. But I think things are very different when it comes to housing in general, because of, it seems that housing is doing really well. We're still selling homes, even though we're kind of in a bit of an economic downturn. So I think it's, it's interesting when we're talking about how to address some of these issues when I'm not even really sure what's going to happen in the next like five or six months when it comes to tourism, right? Yeah. So thanks. Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Brooke.
Yeah, well, obviously, our B and B has been a popular option demanded by the visitors, which Vanjie said are increasingly returning to Rochester, but I know the hospitality industry is really hurting right now too. So again, this isn't a singular solution. I like that the council recently moved to better regulate the units related to fees and inspection requirements and left a door open to sort of see how it's going and then restrict further if needed. They're, they're definitely a positive thing in our community, and we need to keep a close eye on them if they are potentially threatening the stability of our neighborhoods and our businesses. So I think so far, the city's acted prudently. I'm really anxious to see how the report back looks and how compliance is going. So both end.
Thank you. All right, and we have a viewer question that was submitted that kind of dovetails beautifully with some of the topics that were brought up in response to the last question. So with that, it's hard for a large part of our community to know how long into our future COVID-19 is going to be part of the process, right? And thus far, the city of Rochester has taken certain steps, both in the downtown area and in other areas, to try to support local businesses during this time. And I think the only thing that any of us can predict at this point is that it'll be unpredictable. You know, and so with that, you know, please provide your assessment of kind of some of the work that the city has done thus far, and any potential examples of things you think the city could do to help the community and the businesses that support the community during the next six to question mark months relative to COVID. And Brooke, I believe it's your turn.
Sure. My general thinking is that it's never one sector's responsibility to support the community. So I think the city is one part of a solution and has showed up in the conversations I've been part of related to the COVID response as a, as a strong partner, wanting to think differently about how they're able to use their resources to support nonprofits and, and people in the community, but also small businesses. So I think so far, the city's tried and done some really, made some really positive strides, but this is an impossible time. And even with this influx of CARES dollars from both the city and the county now to support businesses and nonprofits, I, it's, it feels like a drop in the bucket when we don't know what we're, what we're facing. So I, I work with leadership of dozens and dozens of nonprofits who are thinking about, I mean, looking at a 2021 budget that is totally uncertain, uncertain revenue, uncertain grant funding, uncertain ability to keep staff on, offer, you know, pay themselves, let alone their employees. So it's just a tough time that is going to require all of us to work together, be as efficient as possible, and be really innovative in how we're supporting our business, business community and our nonprofit community as well. I wish there were an easy answer to that question. It's just tough right now. So as we all know.
Vanjie?
Uh, so the question is, how, how, how do we think the government should be able to support small businesses moving forward with some of the dollars that we have been getting from the state and the federal CARES Act? Is that correct? Kind of?
Kind of, yes and no. I mean, the city is already engaged in certain, taking certain steps independent of both that state and federal financing and in conjunction with it. So I think just it's in general, you know, because this is such a center and focal point, you know, from the context of your position on the city council or potential position on the city council, you know, what do you think the city could, should, can, and potentially would be options to do in this uncertain time?
So I'll use the Conservation Corps as an example. So the city itself, we have $700,000 from the CARES Act to create this Conservation Corps to plant trees. I think it's a great idea to provide some short-term jobs. But however, I think what would probably have been a smarter use of those dollars is actually to provide more training for folks who might have gotten furloughed and, but then let go because their job no longer exists to give them new skills to be able to find a job that they can have on a long-term basis. A lot of the things that we're doing to using funding is for like a Band-Aid for short-term right now. And I think the city itself should look at how we can use a lot of those funding dollars to provide supports for small businesses on a long-term basis and not just like, you know, month to month, trying to figure out like, some of these small businesses aren't getting the grants, right? What are they doing to provide, to support themselves if they're not able to get these small business loan grants? And so many businesses that we don't think about, like hair salons, they're individual folks that like rent seats in, in salons. They consider themselves a small business. And so are we just thinking about the small businesses that have that rent space downtown in offices or have their own kind of buildings? So it's very complex when we're thinking about how we are going to support individuals and businesses moving forward as, as a city. What we do need to know, what we do need is to figure out how we can continue to support the economy here in Rochester. I, we did really well in 2009 during the, the first initial during the past recession, we had, we continued to have a strong economy, even though the rest of the country wasn't doing well. There's a reason why I came to Rochester, because I wasn't in California during the recession, and it was, it hit us very hard. Um, and coming here and being able to find a job, I think we will be able to weather this storm as long as we work together and make sure that we use our dollars smartly for more of a long-term support than just short-term Band-Aids. Thank you.
Thank you, Vanjie. And I think with that, we're going to take just a brief pause to address a technical issue. So John, you had mentioned that we had a small tech issue.
Yeah, I've been trying to get Kathleen. Can you hear me?
Oh, Kathleen's back. She's, she's here.
I'm on, I've been on. I can't be seen or heard.
We can hear you, Kathleen.
Oh, wow. That's great. Thank you. Thank you, John.
We can hear you, but we can't see you, but we know you're, we know you're present. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Eric for our next question.
Yeah, I was stepped away briefly, just so I could try to help get Kathleen on the, on the call. Are we up to question three on the sheet?
Uh, we've been bouncing around.
Let's go with kind of along the same lines with the, with the question six then. Rochester is very proud of the long history of innovation and care that the Mayo Clinic has provided our community and the world. With that said, the city of Rochester is doing enough support businesses other than those directly related to the medical community. Why, why not? And what do you think the city could and should do to support other businesses? And let's just start with Brooke.
Well, I was thinking as Vanjie was talking in the last question, that a lot of businesses, including my own small business, need to be thinking about how to adapt our business model to the context we are now living in and the path ahead of us. So that is, that is one direct way of supporting, but so the city's traditionally not invested in an internal economic development authority and instead leaned on the chamber and Ready to do this work. And we've had some great success with Ready and this example of, of the CARES dollars going to Ready because they're able to disseminate effectively is really positive to see. I do think that more could be done. I'm just not sure if our city is really willing to take on the risk of a bigger investment to truly diversify our economy. So I think, again, creativity within our existing infrastructure is where we should be looking right now. So we have, we have tools that would allow us to do this. For instance, in Yoda, they used our, their economic development authority to create from an in-home business, a 90-plus childcare, child, childcare center. So again, why, why couldn't Rochester do, do things like that? My door would always be open to have these discussions about. My door would always be open to have these discussions about any innovative business ideas to help diversify our economy. That is a priority for me. Again, I think it just should fit within our strong existing infrastructure we have built so far.
Kathleen?
Well, thank you. I'm unaccustomed, as I am, to being muted. This has been really a challenge to sit here. So, but thank you for getting me in, everybody who tried to, who worked hard to get me into this. So thanks for that question. And I do have a pretty different perspective on it. I think the city has really abdicated its responsibility on economic development. We do not have a formal EDA that is, is robust. We have some elements of economic development in our community, but those are supportive. And Ready has been primarily focused on healthcare. So I think it is time for the city council to really assume much more aggressive responsibility in economic development, in retention and attraction of, of employers to this community. And then the tools that they have, I don't think are beyond what other communities have. I just think it does require a stretch to say maybe TIF should be used as part of an economic development tool. Maybe there are other ways I think this community can band together, all of its economic development private agencies, like RAB, like the Chamber, Ready, the Realtors, to focus together on a strategic plan for this community. I think COVID's taught us many things, but one thing it did teach us is the fragility of our economy being so heavily based on one sector. And we always thought that sector, that employer was pretty much recession-proof and we've learned it's not. So I think that the responsibility has been abdicated. I believe it should be formalized, part of governance and private and public collaboration in doing strong economic development in this, in this city. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. Vanji?
Yes, so I do echo both, so a little bit about, a little bit Brooke and Kathleen both said. During this really strange time, uncertain time. Kathleen has said in the past that the free market is not going to help us through this. And this is something where we're going to have to figure out how we, as a city, is going to be able to provide the supports that we need to make sure that we continue to be economically sound. However, yes, it's true that we have centered a lot of, or catered to the healthcare industry here in Rochester, and it is important for us to be able to, you know, focus on diversifying businesses. When you think about what happened to IBM, a lot of the building neighborhoods like Manor, the Manor was in response to folks coming to IBM. So if we have different industries and we make Rochester more attractive to other businesses to come here, I think it will be beneficial for us to make sure that we diversify our economy and not just center it around healthcare. Because even though there's 46,000 employees at Mayo Clinic, there are 70,000 that don't work at Mayo Clinic. So it is important that we continue to find work that they are not centered around healthcare and, and attracting businesses and providing incentives for new businesses to come here. Because when you think, I think Krenlow is, is, is shutting or letting go some of their employees. And then in Dodge Center, they're shutting down what? So that's 200 jobs that we're losing in Dodge Center. And in that, that's, for that small city, that's a huge hit. I don't know how they're going to deal with that. Luckily Rochester is a much larger city with more businesses. But if we, if something like that happened here, like if all of a sudden Mayo Clinic decided to leave, how would that impact us if we, if we don't have a diversified economy? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question is coming from an attendee regarding the permitting process. This is a bit more in the weeds on the technicalities of city operation. But, you know, the city over the course of the last few years has been working on implementing online-based permitting in an effort to speed up the permit process time and make it easier for community members and builders alike. Can you please provide your perspective on what the city has done, can do and should do going forward to try to address the permitting process within building safety and within the city in general? And I think I'll direct this one to, I think it's Vanji's turn.
Okay. I think there's some cities that do kind of a one-stop permitting process to make it more efficient, especially if we're trying to address affordable housing. If we can create a more efficient permitting process, we can start building more affordable housing. And I think that's something that the city really needs to look at and do. I don't, I think, I, I, you know, I don't know what a lot of, some of the city council's incentive to try to create more of a cumbersome permitting process would be, especially if we want to create, you know, more built, build more. We're planning on expanding Rochester and building out. So it is, it would be, it would make sense for the city to create a more streamlined permitting process. Thank you.
Kathleen?
Well, I think this has probably been a question in city council debates for a number of years. How do we accelerate this process? And I know RAB and the Chamber were very, very involved a while back, really pushing for Acela and the implementation of that and the promise that that could bring of acceleration. I think that promise is still fully being realized. But the, sorry, the, um, the new administration has come in to the city, has tried, really, you could see evidence of trying to put more streamlining in place. I do think it has yet to be fully seen. And it needs to be pushed a lot harder and faster. We hear a lot about the value add that's going to come from co-locating portions of the city. But I do think more has to be done and constant evaluation and input from the private sector. There has to be a place for that, not just anecdotal, but more formal and more, a greater evaluation and input to guide the implementation of the, the streamlining and the, reaping the benefit of the co-locating. So I think it's an area of work. I think it's certainly been an area that the city has focused on more recently and perhaps more beneficially, but there's a long way to go.
Thank you, thank you Kathleen. Brooke?
So yes, absolutely. We need more efficiency in our processes across the board, permitting as one of them. I was having a conversation with a colleague about the, for instance, the inspection process and how cumbersome and time-consuming inspection is when you're doing a development project because of the different types of, excuse me, inspection that need to happen and the delay. If some, something small needs to be fixed and having somebody come back and then having to order the, the sequence. So the plumbing and the electrical in that process and just the, the time is money thing is so very real when we do not have efficient processes. So permitting and licensing are really, even though they've been worked on for years, seem to be low-hanging fruit that we just have to be better at. Thank you.
Thank you, Brooke. Eric, we can't hear you.
He's muted, probably.
That's because I'm muted. We'll switch up the order here again, and I believe we'll start with Kathleen. The city has steadily increased the restrictions associated with accessing TIF for development. Please describe your perspective generally on the use of TIF as a development tool. Additionally, are you concerned the added restrictions, the potential positive effect the utilization of TIF can have on incentivizing development? Please explain.
Well, I think the recent utilization, predominant utilization of TIF for construction of higher-end apartments and hotels, I think the distribution has been off balance. I think there, there's certainly use for that only, but you have to follow the, the but if clause, but for clause. And was it always the case in all of those developments, but for TIF money, would they have occurred? And I, I do think the city has to look and do much more due diligence in understanding the market. And if they're going to invest TIF dollars in continually to invest TIF dollars in high-end hotels or high-end apartment houses, what's the capacity? So my philosophy of TIF is that it is a valuable tool. But I don't, I don't think we have looked at it as broadly in this city as we might. Other cities, as I understand it, use it for much more, smaller and not strictly construction economic development. So I am concerned about putting artificial restrictions. I think that is broad, that broad brush really does reduce the flexibility of valuable use of it, of the product, of the tool. But I, and I think we should be more open-minded, the same extent, for alternative additional uses of TIF. So important conversation, I think it's been too narrowly interpreted and overused in certain areas and definitely not used as much as it might be in the creation of affordable housing. The amount of TIF units, or I'm sorry, affordable units at the 50 and 60 AMI level, the amount of TIF that's been used for that is certainly lower than the number of units that has been used to create at the high end. And I think that is problematic.
Thank you, Kathleen. Vanji, the question about TIF?
Okay, so I'm just gonna put it out there that in the last five years, a lot of the building has been, because of the DMC. And the DMC asked the state basically for $3 billion. But what they needed to do is find private investing. So I think a lot of the TIF dollars was to attract private investors in these last five years. And so that's why we ended up with a lot of high-end apartments and, and hotels. Because until they met those private investors, they, they wouldn't be able to get any state funding. This is my understanding. As I followed all of this in the last six or however many years that the DMC has been in play. So now, five years later, downtown is all, you know, dug up because we're putting in new sewers. It'd be, that was part of the infrastructure, part of like attracting more construction and density for downtown. But now as we're moving forward, I think that we need to use TIF as more of an incentive to create more affordable housing. Since we have done what we've been doing in the last five years when it comes to luxury apartments and luxury high-end hotels, that we should focus on creating more workforce housing and affordable housing and using TIF dollars to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Brooke?
So everything that Vanji and Kathleen just said, I would take it a step further and say that when we think about the positive potential for loosening up TIF use in Rochester, it is, it is absolutely for housing, but it's also for even more creative ideas like childcare centers and grocery stores and other community and other community amenities that really make our neighborhoods in this city thrive in downtown and outside of downtown. So this is the type of thinking and really good demonstration of where builders and developers can help improve our community that I feel hopeful and excited about. So I'd really lean on the Rochester area builders and all of your members and partners to help the city determine what are those realistic opportunities to strengthen neighborhoods using TIF dollars and benefit Rochester overall.
Thank you. I will throw one more at you and then we'll, we'll finish with some closing statements. Rochester celebrates its 162nd birthday today. 62 years, when the city of Rochester looks back on its first woman council president. How would you like to be remembered? Brooke, we'll start with you.
I would like to be remembered that I was a strong and effective leader that brought different perspectives across our community and across our partners together to set shared goals, identified where the shared value is that we can collectively invest our resources as a community and drive our work forward to improve everybody's lives in one of the hardest times we've gone through as a community. And to think back on all of the, the women role models in my life earlier in my career, I, I hope to be that for other young women leaders who are looking to really make a difference in our community, which can be so real at the local level and is so very true in a community like Rochester, where city council and our county board and our other governing bodies really truly can improve this place that we all live together. Thank you.
I'd just like to jump in there real quick and amend Eric's question slightly and say, non-male Caucasian city council president, to make sure we're doing this the right way. And with that, I believe Kathleen would be next.
Okay, well, as a non-male person, how would I like to be remembered? Well, I'd like to be remembered, not in the near future, but in the far distant future, as a person who stepped up and was a person who came and did step up at the right time based on her experience, that when people look back on this time, they say this was similar to when the tornado came through, when the floods came, when the community was greatly challenged. And I hope if I'm elected and can serve as well as I would want to with collaboration from other members of the council, that people will say, her unique set of experiences, working at all levels of government, working in high-level positions in government, understanding the economic landscape of our community, having worked for Mayo Clinic and in the trenches at the Chamber of Commerce, especially in a time when the Chamber was so challenged, in collaboration with other organizations, opening up the Chamber to nonprofits, building capacity, changing the Chamber's mission from a membership organization to a service organization that might, what people would say is, she was a person right for the times, her experience mattered, she was strong, she was an independent thinker, and she was fierce when we needed her to be and gentle when we needed her to be. Thanks.
And Vanji?
Yeah, um, as, if, to be remembered as the first non-male person of color city council president, that would be amazing and a big deal here in Rochester, which would say a lot about where we are as a city. And as we're moving forward, I would hope that people would remember me as someone who was thoughtful, strong, with an effective leader, who was a good steward of the taxpayer dollars and was creative in a time where things were strange and uncertain and helped to bridge the gaps and communication with different. At this time, I feel a lot of divisiveness, that we needed a lot of healing as we're moving through a pandemic. And hopefully come out of this that I helped guide and lead the city council forward to make sure that we become a stronger city as we emerge out of such a difficult time. Thank you.
Thank you, Vanji. And I think with that, we are approaching the end of our hour. So for each candidate, if you have just a brief closing comment that you'd like to wrap it up on, I think, Vanji, I will go back to you for our conclusion of our very first virtual town hall.
Thank you all for having me here at your first town hall. So we must embrace an expansive vision for the Rochester economy that creates- So we must embrace an expansive vision for the Rochester economy that creates jobs, puts 21st century public investment first, advances economic equity for historically disenfranchised residents, and protects the environment. I believe that I am the right person to lead Rochester as we work towards these goals. Through my work through nonprofits, as a person of color, I know the importance of listening to all voices at the table. For Rochester to heal, to thrive and grow from this global pandemic, we need to listen and uplift all Rochester residents, especially those that have felt unheard and unseen by city leadership. It is time that we make Rochester a truly welcoming city that values all of its residents, both the native-born and immigrant, white and black indigenous people of color, straight in the LGBTQ+ community, both the poorest and the richest residents, including the homeless, as well as male physicians and CEOs. Rochester can only heal and be truly great when all of us are heard and valued. I believe I am the right leader to make that happen and Rochester is ready for a leader like me. So thank you. You can learn more about me and my campaign and my platform at vanjiCastro.com. And don't forget to vote August 11.
Thank you, Vanji. Brooke?
Thank you for having us today. I think I will just say, if you're looking for a candidate who is willing to say that they'll slash every development fee and always vote for the development and building, what the development and building community wants, I might not be your candidate. But if you want a partner who knows deeply and personally how important development policy and homeownership is to a city, one that will always have a door open to you and willing to work together, then I humbly ask for your support. I want this community to be the very best it can be so people of all ages, abilities and backgrounds can thrive for generations to come. You can learn a lot more about me on my website at brooke2020.com and please do vote on or by August 11. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Brooke. And Kathleen?
Thank you. And I thank you so much for having this and I appreciate all the technological gymnastics that went into getting me on here. But in the interest of time, I'm going to cut to the chase and say, I will not need on-the-job training for this job. I've been following the city council weekly, daily, for over three years. I've seen the transition from the former administration to the new. I understand what's underlying there. I've seen the culture of the city council, which is one of the reasons I'm running, because I think we need to change, change in what we expect from city government and change in the culture of the council and how it functions. I want to say also that I've seen the incredible value of organizations like the Realtors and the RAB in helping the functioning of the city. It concerns me sometimes that we have to hire very significantly priced consultants to help us do some of that job. And I have to say, without being total of a suck-up here, without Rick Dold, I think, leading a lot of the legal interpretation of the comp plan and now and the LDM, and now the Unified Code, we'd be at a loss. So you have to have a place and continue to have a big place at the table. And if I am elected and I do respectfully ask for your vote, I think my record of experience is the right, at the right time, will serve well at this time. I want to also just say, I am somebody who believes in partnerships. It's been the hallmark of my career and it's why I'm proud to tell you that I've been endorsed by the Carpenters Union. It's not oftentimes that the president of a Chamber of Commerce is endorsed by a labor union, but I think that shows you that I am a person who works with everybody on common common goals. And I believe, as many of you do, that working that way is the only way. And I pledge to do that. And just in closing, I want to say congratulations on the best month in history, recent history, on residential and CIC sales, July beating June. Pretty amazing. It says a lot about this community. It says a lot about you. It says a lot about what we need to do to build more housing in this community to meet that demand. So congratulations. And I want to step up with you to the challenge of in of meeting that increased need for housing affordable, and affordable is in the eye of the beholder, affordable at all levels, because we have a strong need and you're a big part of solving that. So I ask for your vote on August 11. Thank you, Vanji, for always reminding us to say that. And I also want to let you know that it's really been a privilege to be on this campaign trail, albeit virtually, with these two women. I've often been the only woman in a room throughout my career and it's been a real joy to be on a stage with two others. So thank you for this opportunity.
Yeah, I'd just like to say thank you to everybody for participating, Kathleen. I apologize for the little glitches we had. But I would just like to point out that I made the recommendation to the RAB board that we retain Rick. So.
So good, good move.
In case I haven't eaten all my leaders listening, I want to throw my, you know, but anyway, thank you very much for your participation. Good luck with the rest of your campaigns. It's a challenge in our current environment. I miss people. I miss having conversations in person in large groups. So, you know, add that to your your challenges as a candidate. So good luck. And again, thank you for raising your hand and I'm sure we'll talk again.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, everyone. Bye.
Bye-bye.